Good afternoon. This afternoon, we have the privilege of holding a memorial service for our member of the Law Association, Richard J. Callahan. We recognize and appreciate the attendance of his family members who are here to join us for the memorial service. And I would like to acknowledge them at this time. Janet, his wife, children, son RJ. Other members of the family that are here are Chase, Connor, and Cooper Cowden, grandchildren, brothers-in-law Sean Bradley and Joe Barrigan, and Matt Cowden's son-in-law and Chelsea Cowden niece. On February 19th of this year, I appointed a committee to prepare a report and resolution recognizing the life and accomplishments of Richard Callahan. The chairman of the committee is the district attorney Ryan Gardner. And members of that committee are Ed Mitchell, John Zurich, Don Martino, and Chris Lavecchio. I now recognize the district attorney Ryan Gardner to present the committee report and resolution, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Judges, fellow members of the bar, the Honorable Judge Nancy L. Butts, President Judge of the Court of Common Pleas of LeCombe County, 29th Judicial District, by order dated February 19, 2021, appointed the undersigned committee to draft resolutions memorializing the life of Richard J. Callahan Esquire, and to submit same to this honorable court at a session of court scheduled May 4, 2021. The report and resolutions of this committee will now be submitted to the court as follows. Richard J. Callahan, commonly referred to as Dick by his friends and family, was born in Williamsport on December 16, 1948, to Charles V. Callahan Jr. and Mary G. Chapman Callahan. Dick has three siblings, Charles V. Callahan III of Colorado, Joan A. Callahan of Muncie, and Sharon Horsberger of Colorado. Dick is survived by his siblings, his wife Janet L. Callahan, a son, Richard J. Callahan Jr. of Williamsport, grandchildren Chase R., Connor M., and Cooper M. Cowden. Dick was preceded in death by his daughter Shannon, who passed away unexpectedly from injuries sustained as a result of an ATV accident in 2012. Dick graduated from St. Joseph's High School in 1966. During his time at St. Joe's, Dick was a member of the high school debate team as well as the basketball team. Dick excelled as an athlete despite overcoming polio as a child. But for a slight limp and noticeable size difference between his two legs, you would never know that he was afflicted by polio when watching him dribble a basketball on the court or run down a fly ball on the baseball field. Dick's athletic prowess led him to join the Pennsylvania Army National Guard in 1970. He remained in the guard until 1979. Following graduation from high school, Dick attended the Pennsylvania State University where he graduated with honors. He graduated from the Villanova University School of Law in 1974 and was subsequently admitted to the Court of Common Pleas of LeCombe County and to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania the same year. He was first employed as an associate attorney with the law firm of Greavy and Mitchell in 1974. Dick remained with the Mitchell family after the Mitchells and Greavy split. Dick continued to practice with the Mitchell and Mitchell firm until he hung his own shingle as a sole practitioner in 1978. He remained in solo practice until he partnered with Anthony Mealy, forming the Mealy and Callahan Law Office. Throughout his 40-plus-year legal career, Dick realized partnerships and/or associations with various local attorneys, including John Zurich, Don Martino, Ryan Gardner, Christian Lavecchio, and Matt Deemer. Dick took great pride in campaigning for and assisting Ryan to achieve the position of district attorney in 2019. And he did this while silently battling several significant medical issues, including diabetes and renal failure. Dick will certainly be remembered as a zealous criminal and civil litigator who possessed a quick wit and a feisty fighting Irish spirit. In addition to his legal accomplishments, Dick was also a proud business owner. He purchased the new LeCombe Bakery on June 28, 1991, and owned and operated same until he sold it to his daughter Shannon and son-in-law Matt on May 22, 2006. It was during his ownership of the new LeCombe Bakery that Dick underwent heart valve replacement surgery and left the day-to-day operations of the bakery to his longtime friend, attorney Ed Mitchell, until he was medically cleared to return. Heart surgery was not a deterrent to Dick's business endeavors as he decided to purchase and operate the Bridge Tavern located in South Williamsport with his then-business partner Ron Insinger. If you ever had occasion to meet Dick, you knew immediately his allegiance to the blue and white of Penn State University. He was a member of the Nittany Lion Club and the Penn State Founders Club. Any local avid Penn State fan trying to score last-minute tickets to a wrestling match, concert, basketball game, or football game realized that one phone call to Dick would likely generate a few tickets, and if lucky, his parking pass as well. Dick's passion for sports did not end with all things Penn State as he also bled green and white for his Philadelphia Eagles. When not swinging his clubs on the country club golf course during football season, Dick could almost always be found in front of the television with his friends and family watching either Penn State or Eagles gridiron football. Dick's knowledge base with regard to basketball was second to none. He could easily dissect both offensive and defensive plays. This skill set led him to become longtime Loyal Sock varsity basketball coach Ron Insinger's assistant during the era when Loyol Sock made several good runs at a state title in the mid to late 1990s. Dick was the brain trust behind the shot calling and formations during this time and spoke often of the 1995 Loyol Sock versus Williamsport game that was held at LeCombe College. It was also during the mid to late 90s that Dick was introduced to Loyol Sock High School student Tyrone Portman through his son RJ. After RJ explained to Dick that Tyrone's home life was less than desirable, the decision was made to allow Tyrone to live with Dick and his family until Tyrone graduated high school. After Tyrone's untimely death at the age of 26, Dick paid for all funeral and burial expenses. Dick was a devoted husband, father, and grandfather. He enjoyed life to the fullest, capitalized on every opportunity to attend any event in which his grandchildren participated. And despite the affliction of physical ailments just prior to his death, he still enjoyed going to the office and sharing anecdotes about Chase, Connor, and Cooper's many accomplishments. Dick's family has lost a loved and loving husband, father, and grandfather. Society has lost a contributing, compassionate, and exemplary member. Your committee recommends the adoption of the following resolutions. Be it resolved that in the passing of Richard J. Callahan, there has been a loss to the bar of LeCombe County of an able and conscientious member who upheld and exemplified the highest traditions of the legal profession. A loss to the community of the valued participants. A loss to his family of a devoted, kind, and loving husband, father, and grandfather. And a loss to his friends and acquaintances of a sincere and caring man. Be it further resolved that this court and this bar do hereby extend to Dick's wife, son, grandchildren, siblings, nieces, and nephews a deep and heartfelt expression of sympathy. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread at length upon the minutes of the Court of Common Pleas of LeCombe County and that copies of the same be sent to Dick's wife, son, and grandchildren. Respectfully submitted, myself, C. Edward Mitchell Esquire, John R. Zurich Esquire, Donald F. Martino Esquire, Christian A. Lavecchio Esquire.
Thank you, DA. Would you like to make some comments at this time?
I would, thank you. I first had occasion to meet Dick when he became a repeat customer at the tire shop. This was shortly after Shannon passed away. For the next several years after that, we discussed off and on the possibility of sharing office space. It wasn't until late fall of 2016 that I began to rent space from him in his office located in the Woodlands Bank Building on 4th Street. I use the word rent loosely because he never did charge me one cent. It was at this time I learned quickly of Dick's generous spirit. Although there was a part of me that was convinced that he was simply content having someone in the office to carry on conversation with. And many conversations were had. He shared countless stories about Shannon and RJ when they were children, what preservatives should or should not be put in bread, and the science behind picking a winning horse at the races. He adored my daughter Quinn and spoiled her rotten each time she visited the office. She still speaks of the chocolate-covered pretzels from Purity Candy Store that he always kept at his desk. And frankly, he spoiled me as well. I could not afford in 2017 to take vacation with my family. This did not sit well with Dick, so he paid for my family to join his at their beach house in Avalon. My only expense was the gas in my car tuned from New Jersey. It would be easy for me to sit here and continue sharing anecdotes about my brief partnership with Dick. But honestly, I think it important for his family to understand that Dick's legacy, in my mind, is defined by his profound adoration for his daughter, his son, and his grandchildren. He impressed upon me the value of always making my daughter and my family a priority. He regretted allowing his business ventures and the practice of law to distract from RJ and Shannon during their childhood. It was clear that Shannon's death significantly impacted his perspective and made him reevaluate his priorities. For every missed opportunity with RJ and Shannon when they were children, Dick was not going to make the same mistakes with Chase, Connor, and Cooper. Words alone cannot describe how intensely focused he was with respect to any activity involving the grandchildren and how proud he was of each of their accomplishments. His remarkable generosity and passionate devotion to his family are qualities from which we all can learn and the qualities I will miss most about my friend. My deepest and sincere condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mitchell?
May it please the court, members of the bar, members of the Callahan family. Dick Callahan was a man of many talents. As far as a lawyer is concerned, he was an effective and versatile lawyer. And I use both those words intentionally. He was effective in the representation of his clients, but he was also versatile. He practiced in many areas. He practiced not only in both civil and criminal law, but he also practiced in domestic relations. He practiced in workman's compensation, and even now and then practiced in real estate and estates. And wherever he practiced, he practiced well. Sometimes relying on other people for help, but always doing what needed to be done. He was a successful businessman. He was a successful businessman not only because he accomplished customer satisfaction, but also because he had employee satisfaction. When he bought the new LeCombe Bakery, it was, like it has been recently, involved in a labor dispute and was shut down. And he bought it in that distressed situation and made a very successful business out of it. It's always been mentioned he was a gifted athlete. In addition to his prowess as a basketball player and his knowledge of basketball and a baseball player, he was also a very good golfer. And I know personally, he played in the final rounds of at least one tournament at the country club. He was a knowledgeable coach, not only knowledgeable as a team coach, but also knowledgeable as an individual player-coach. It's already been mentioned what he did as an assistant, a non-paid assistant by that, for Ron Insinger at Loyol Sock. But in addition to that, he also frequently helped individual athletes with their skills, particularly with golf. He was a devoted family man. He was a loyal alumnus and loyal contributor to Penn State. But in addition to that, he was a very generous, quiet contributor to many underprivileged children who came to his attention through his father, or through his children. It's already been mentioned how he cared for Tyrone. But he also frequently gave clothes and food to other underprivileged children. And except for the fact that RJ discussed it at his funeral, I doubt that that was known by many people. He didn't expect any accolades or any recognition, but he did it because it was needed and because he's a caring person. He was absolutely a sincere friend. If you were a friend of Dick's, you had quite a friendship. He was always there for help, even if he couldn't do it himself. If you called him to help you and he couldn't do it himself, he would have somebody else there to help you. I first got to know Dick when he came to work for the Greavy and Mitchell Firm in 1974. And he remained with us until we divided into the two firms. He stayed with us for two years after we opened Mitchell and Mitchell. In addition to being a very capable lawyer, he was also our social chairman. Because we were opening a new office in a new building, we had a number of open houses, and he was in charge of all of those and did an excellent job. I remained, you know, had frequent contact with him after he formed his own office and throughout his other partnerships. We sometimes associated together in the practice. We were sometimes adversaries. And as always, there are war stories, and we had our share of war stories. And I thought about talking about one, but we'll probably run out of time. Very briefly, it had to do with a woman who claimed she was injured as a result of being struck by a piece of furniture that was run into by a UPS operator with a hand truck. And this was a pretty large piece of furniture. And so we had it brought to the courthouse to show to the jury. And this demonstration worked a lot better than was planned because when it was brought to the courthouse, they brought it down in a big movie van, which they parked in front of the courthouse. And they used five movers that were stationed around it while it was in the lobby of the courthouse. So our point was very well emphasized to the jury. Another thing, Dick also, when we were young lawyers, we played a lot of paddleball. And just like has been mentioned, he did have a different, he was a polio survivor, and he did have, his legs were a different size. But I never noticed the limp, and the way he traveled around the handball court was phenomenal. We were competitive, but it was totally because of him. We were social friends, and for the last 16 years, we were neighbors. We both lived on the fourth hole of the Williamsport Country Club Golf Course. I lived on the fairway. He lived at the tee. And he had a gazebo put in his backyard right at the boundary, right next to the golf course, right next to the tee. And whenever there was a tournament, he stocked that gazebo with beverages and snacks and opened it to all his friends, numerous friends who gathered there. And there were many a putter who got harassed from that gazebo. And some of them even came over and joined the party briefly before they moved on to the next hole. As I said, if you were a friend of Dick Callahan, you had a great friend. Throughout our careers, we frequently got together for lunch. And since he has died, there have been numerous occasions when I just had the thought, boy, I'd like to discuss that with Dick Callahan. Dick's strength of character shined as he fought through his various health issues and also as he fought through the loss of his daughter. Dick had open-heart surgery, diabetes, diabetic retinopathy, peripheral vascular disease, renal failure, and was on dialysis. And he also lost his daughter through the tragic accident. But through it all, he maintained a positive attitude. He maintained a desire and enthusiasm for the future. He intended to recover, and he had plans for the future. As I said, Dick Callahan was a man of many talents. His loss is a tremendous loss to his family, Janet, RJ, Chase, Connor, and Cooper. And also a loss to all of those very many good friends that Dick had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Zurich? Did you wish to make any statements? Don't forget to unmute.
Okay. May it please the court, members of the bar, Janet, RJ, Matt, and other family members and friends of Dick's. It's an honor and a pleasure for me to speak today at Dick's service. I first got to know Dick back in 2001. Now, prior to then, I was an acquaintance of Dick's. I knew him, as Ed mentioned, through golf at Williamsport Country Club. I knew him as a very good golfer, but we just didn't quite have the same circle of golf friends, so I had never played a round of golf with him up until that point. I knew he was a business owner and had a successful business with the bakery. I knew he was the assistant Loyol Sock High School basketball coach and had a lot of success in coaching. And I also knew Dick had the nicest, sweetest, luxury convertible Jaguar sports car. And as I recall, there were only two in town at that time. Dick drove one, and attorney Alan Erdle drove another one. So I figured he had something going, you know, pretty good for himself there. And what I didn't know about Dick, but learned shortly after moving in and working with Dick and forming a law practice, was how smart and clever and quick-witted that Dick was and not afraid to think out of the box. He was a problem solver, and he had that courage to think outside of the box when he was trying to help somebody. He was so very articulate, well-spoken, easy to talk to, charismatic in the way that he could carry on a conversation, and just a very, very interesting person the more and more that you got to know him. And most importantly, the more that I spent time with him, I saw how kind and caring of a person that he was and how he would almost do anything to help someone. And for anyone there that maybe didn't know Dick personally, in the last couple of years, there's actually a TV show and a character that reminds me a lot of Dick. And that show was New Amsterdam. And they have a main character by the name of Max, who's the head of the hospital. And Max is very clever and bright and has this problem-solving approach and very articulate and easy to approach. And, you know, would do anything for anybody that came up to him. And Max had this tagline, whenever someone would approach him, he would say just simply, "How can I help?" And Dick was like that, and I don't recall, it might have been the same tagline. But you knew when Dick said to you, "How can I help?" He just had this way about him of how he would look at you and just listen. And you could just tell at that moment, he was all in and that he was going to do what he could do to help you out. I'm an example of that. So back to 2001, at that time, I was a solo practitioner. I had moved back into town, you know, recently practicing law and was struggling a bit with the practice because I had a fairly limited scope of practice, just doing real estate and business transaction work, and really struggled with clients that would have that need for litigation or a magistrate matter or domestics. And I had expressed that to a friend of mine about this gap in my practice. And my friend said, "John, you should give Dick Callahan a call." He said, "I think you two would get along really well and that your practice areas, you know, might really complement each other, and you might have a good synergy there between the two of you that, you know, could turn into a good practice." So it's a little uncharacteristic of me to kind of reach out, kind of conservative by nature. But I picked up the phone, I called Dick, and just a short, quick phone call, he was very open. I think we met actually the next day in his conference room down at his law office. And what I thought would be a quick half-hour discussion telling him what was up with my life and what I was thinking turned into several hours in the blink of an eye. And we talked about everything from both of us being Eagles football fans. We talked about our families, we talked about golf, we talked about our legal practice. And Dick, the problem solver that he is, immediately, just right there in that first meeting, being so kind and generous, offered for me to move down into his office. And his thought was, the best way to know if we might, you know, be able to form a good practice would be for me to be there, see if we were compatible, we'd get along, and just, you know, use it as kind of an experiment. And I even mentioned, wow, you know, see what I can do about maybe moving my, you know, office down into his. And right away, he had the solution. He's like, "Don't worry, I've got it." And I think it was that Saturday, I met him at my old office. He shows up with a box truck that was a bakery truck of his or of his guys that worked for him. And while Dick and I just kind of quickly started carrying a conversation about what we had done the last day or two, it was like that, that they picked up my office, all the furniture, filing cabinets, et cetera, in the back of that truck, and in no time, I was set up down in his office. And from that point, you know, over the next couple of weeks, I started to really learn how interesting of a guy that Dick Callahan was. I first noticed how the phone would ring. He was really well-known in the community. And just by word of mouth of, you know, satisfied clients that he had helped, that phone would ring constantly with people calling, trying to get help from Dick. I also picked up on one of his hobbies, off-track racehorse betting. And I would see on his desk, which, again, back in the early 2000s, it was a race sheet. And this thing would look like Egyptian hieroglyphics and no easy kind of, you know, key to understand what was written there. But Dick knew all the details of what that racing sheet meant and how to go down to the local off-track betting facility down by the LeCombe Mall and how to place bets and how to box those bets and do trifectas and all kind of exotic wagering at a level of detail that reminded me of a financial analyst on Wall Street poring over financial spreadsheets and tax returns. I mean, he really took it to that level. And I had several friends that used to like to bet on horses. And I can by far say Dick was the most successful of them. And a number of times, if we had a slow afternoon, I would just tag along and I thought it was very interesting just to watch him and maybe do some shadowing of what he was doing. And, you know, he had some success. And so by far, you know, very interesting how he approached a hobby like that. Also, in the first, you know, month or so that I was in practice with Dick, seeing how busy he was, I actually had a conversation with Dick and entertained the idea of trying to help him and learn a little bit about some of his areas of the law where he practiced. And one of that was domestics. And he said, "Hey, John, I've got," and I'll probably butcher that. And he said, "Hey, John, I've got," and I'll probably butcher this for some of you practitioners in these areas, but I think it was an equitable distribution hearing. So I tagged along with him the next day. And Dick represented husband and he had husband testify to a few things. And then on cross examination by opposing counsel, she started driving home this theme where she said, "Well, husband, you informed my client that you like to have lunch every day with Betty from the bookkeeping department. How old would you estimate Betty was?" And Dick objected and the hearing officer heard the reasoning for Dick's objection and opposing counsel and overruled Dick's objection. So Dick's client had to testify and say, "Well, I don't know for sure, but I think Betty was maybe 22, 23 years old." And then the next question on cross was, "Okay, you used to tell your wife you'd have coffee breaks with, you know, so and so. And how old would you estimate she was?" And again, the client just said, "I guess maybe 22, 23." So that went on for several more exchanges. And then, I mean, as quick as this, when it came back on redirect to Dick, the first thing he says was, "Well, client, opposing counsel here thinks you're pretty good at guessing women's ages. How old do you think opposing counsel is?" And right away, there was this objection, stand up, talk over everybody. My eyes got that big, just, you know, watching what was going on. And I did notice though, even opposing counsel at that point, after about 20, 30 seconds of this chaos, had a little bit of a side smile on the, you know, to it. So I knew that everything was good, big picture. But it was just, you know, shocking for me to kind of, you know, never seen a domestic hearing before, to see something like that. And when we got back to the office later that day, I remember sitting down and, you know, Dick grabbing a Diet Coke and sipping on it. And, you know, I said to Dick, "Dick, I'll never be that quick witted, sharp, confident, you know, to, you know, handle and conduct a hearing, you know, like that." And Dick, you know, again, very kind and was like, "John, that's just fine. Whatever you're comfortable doing, just stay with, you know, what you like to do." And it was all good. The first time I saw Dick in a jury trial, he tried a case down in Lancaster County. And it was through a mutual friend of mine, actually, one of my best friends growing up, turned out to be an attorney down in the Philly area and got to know Dick through me visiting the office a couple of times. And didn't do a lot of trial work in a week, all of a sudden had a jury trial. Case didn't settle. So he called me and Dick and asked Dick if he would come down and help him try the case. And of course, Dick was up for the challenge. He loved that type of an opportunity. So we hopped in the car and headed down to Lancaster for a couple of days. And we met, you know, before the start of the trial, opposing counsel and the judge. And it was one of those plaintiff's cases where we didn't have the facts. And you just knew it was, you know, an uphill battle. But it was a good client of my friends and wanted them to have their day in court. And, you know, Dick was up as well for, you know, the task. So I could tell in meeting opposing counsel, before the trial started, opposing counsel was very confident, very calm, knew that he had the facts on his side and, you know, pretty much you could tell he knew that he had a walk in the park with his trial. But once the trial began and once Dick had an opportunity to cross examine a couple of witnesses and to speak to the jury, I looked over at opposing counsel and his face and his demeanor and his voice totally changed. He knew early on, Dick was dangerous. And I mean dangerous in a good way, that he knew how to conduct himself in a courtroom and also to have that charisma that would be very attractive to a jury to maybe persuade that jury to see the facts as our client and Dick were presenting the facts. And so I could tell it all of a sudden got very interesting real quick through that two day trial. And at the conclusion, however, the jury goes out. What would normally be a 15, 20 minute turnaround, turned into several hours. And Dick didn't win that case, but we got to see what, at least I saw how good of a litigator he was and could see how he affected opposing counsel to, you know, change their strategy kind of midstream and how they had to react. And so it was just, just very enlightening. And Dick and I, over the years, then I would help him with, you know, some of the brief writing and more technical detailed aspects, but he loved to try cases. And we had a memorable jury trial, federal court Judge McCorr. It was a three day jury trial. It was again, a contingency fee plaintiff type case where once again, the facts were totally against us. But the client was a good friend of mine. Dick liked him as well. We wanted to give him his day in court at least. So, you know, of course, there was no settlement in a case like that. It goes to trial. And, you know, Dick, over the course of three days, did the best he could trying to take lemons and turn them into lemonade during the trial. And but, you know, the facts were the facts. It was a tough case. And I remember the third day, there was some cleanup work and Dick, an opposing attorney, had to do their jury instruction questions with Judge McCorr. So met with the judge and Dick and opposing counsel couldn't quite agree on those jury instruction questions. And finally, Dick kind of came up with the idea and he split what was kind of a compound question into two separate questions, an A and a B. And there was a yes or no answer by the jury to A and a yes or no to B. And opposing counsel was okay with it. Judge McCorr was okay with it. So went out, closings were held and jury questions, you know, presented. And after a while, while the jury was deliberating, I asked Dick, I said, "What, you know, was happening there with that?" And Dick explained to me that because, you know, things weren't going real well with, you know, the facts, but he felt like he had the jury engaged. He said to me, "John, juries like to solve a case. They like to find an answer where sometimes there isn't an answer." And he said, "I split that into two questions because I think it might help the jury answer one way for, you know, the facts that were, you know, the defense counsel position and one way to answer for us as well. So that ultimately, at the end of the day, if they gave a yes response to A, they'd be saying, hey, we like the plaintiff here. But if they gave a no response to B, it was, we'd lose. It would be in favor of defense counsel. But Dick felt then if that occurred by the jury, there'd be a shot at judgment notwithstanding the verdict." And low and behold, didn't the jury come back and answer yes to question one? No to question two. And right away, when the jury left, we met back in Judge McCorr's chambers. And Dick right away was adamant that that was judgment notwithstanding the verdict. And of course, opposing counsel disagreed vehemently. Judge McCorr said, "Brief it, you know, and I'll make a ruling," to which we did. And to our surprise, when we got Judge McCorr's order, he concurred with Dick and found that it was judgment notwithstanding the verdict. And we won that case. And again, I'm not a litigator, but my understanding is that's pretty rare to win a case by judgment notwithstanding the verdict. So Dick and I often, you know, after that, we were so happy that we were able to help the client out, win that case and talked about that, you know, at great length thereafter. And I always used to like to give golf analogies for Dick because he was a golfer. And I kidded him how it was the equivalent of being on the 18th or final hole of a golf match and Dick stood up and hit a shot that was a hole in one and won it on 18 with that kind of dramatic fashion. So, you know, that was one of, you know, the very memorable trials that I remember Dick having great success and just like a master at chess, was able to look ahead three moves and plan out what would maybe be a potential outcome here and piecing together what had happened over the days of trial and called it perfectly. So, you know, after that, Dick and I were together for approximately five years total in practice. And I can honestly say it was within my professional practice time period, the five best years that I've had, I've had the most fun working with Dick professionally in the practice of law. We became really good friends. We spent a lot of time together in the office, even outside of the office. We traveled down to several Eagles football games. Dick being a Villanova grad knew how to get around Center City, Philadelphia. He'd drive us down. He knew where to park in Center City, so right by a subway station. We'd zip in on a subway to the sports complex area where the Sixers and the Eagles play. Have a great time at the game, zip out, ducking, beating all the crowd on the subway, back to downtown, have a great dinner, you know, downtown and head home. Likewise, we would enjoy watching at Dick and Janet's house in their basement, Eagles football, a couple of professional golf matches now and then on TV. Dick and Janet treated me and my wife to a concert at the Bryce Jordan Center where he had founders tickets. It was a Billy Joel and Elton John combo concert. And it was just, you know, a superb evening that we got to spend with the Callahans. And, you know, one that we'll never forget and always remember. And there was a winter or two maybe where we rented some extra office space above the office from the bank where it had some nice high eight, nine foot tall ceilings. And I actually put a golf net and a golf mat up there and a couple of old clubs and balls. And Dick and I would go there over the winter and just kind of talk about life, cases, workload, hit some golf balls into the net and just, you know, a way to kind of break up the day and have a, have a good, you know, experience with each other. When I moved my practice, I think it was sometime in 2006. And likewise, that was, you know, kind of sad for me. It was a time when in my practice, it was very busy. We had a paralegal that left and I couldn't find a replacement paralegal. And in transaction work, it's very, very difficult. So I was, you know, spending very long, you know, 10, 12 hour days in the office, getting pulled six ways to Sunday with family, with the workload. And an opportunity popped up for me to join a firm where they had all those tools and staff already in place. I didn't have to try to find someone, train someone. So once again, I, you know, had to sit down with Dick in the same conference room where we started and explain the situation to him. And once again, Dick was so kind and caring. And his words were just basically, "John, how can I help? That's an opportunity for you. You should take it. And how can I help you, you know, with the transition?" So, so once again, you know, just another example of how kind and caring and that he would do anyone, anything for anybody. After that, you know, I wish that we would have seen each other more. We did see each other from time to time over the years. Most commonly at Williamsport Country Club, socializing, I'd get to catch up with them for a few minutes. Or even a few times, we met in the grocery store. And each time we saw each other in the grocery store, we'd immediately stand there for half an hour, just like old college friends or high school friends catching up on, you know, just what's been going on in our lives and, and family. So it goes without saying, I'm really, really going to miss Dick. And again, extend my deepest sympathies and condolences to Janet, to RJ, to Matt, to his grandkids and the entire Callahan family. Peace be with you all and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Martino?
Thank you, Honor. If it pleases the court, what I'm going to say kind of echoes what Ryan and John have already said. And basically, that's how appreciative I am of Dick and what he did for me and what he did for, for my career, really. I was trying, as I'm listening to Ryan and John talk, to try to remember how I ended up sharing space with Dick. And I honestly don't remember. What I can tell you is I didn't know him very well before that. And I don't know how it came about, but I think it's, that's indicative of Dick, that he was just so looking to help people and so generous. And he really, he really took me under his wing in a lot of ways. It was my first job away from a law firm. I didn't know anything about business. I didn't know anything about bookkeeping. I didn't know anything. And Dick was really there just to answer questions and help me in an incredibly generous way. And I really, I really owe my, my success, on my own at least, to Dick, absolutely. And more than that, he really became a friend. I mean, everyone, everyone who's talked about Dick has talked about how he just loved to talk. And when you were around Dick, you couldn't help but, but sit for hours and talk with him. And, you know, sometimes it was him helping me with, with business. Sometimes it was him helping me with the law. Sometimes it was just us talking about family, about life, about everything. He was just so generous, not just with his, his help for people, but also I think with his, with his time and his openness with people. And I really appreciate the time that I had talking to him and the time, you know, I'd go in every day and it was, I get to talk to Dick. It was a great, it was a great experience. I really, I really appreciated it. And I, you know, I just enjoyed sitting with him and talking. And his interest in, we talked about criminal law, which I, I know Dick did some of it, but he genuinely seemed interested in criminal law and what I was doing. And it was just, it was a very nice time. And I guess beyond that, I guess I'll be the one to tell a funny story, which is, I imagine a lot of people have a story about Dick towing their car, which he kind of did on occasion at the spots at the law firm. But I think my story is a little different in that I worked there when Dick towed my car. And the first time he towed it, I had gone, it was late in the evening and I had gone out to dinner with my wife Eileen and we went to the Moon and Raven. And we got back, it was rainy. I remember a rainy day. And we got back around eight o'clock and my car wasn't there. And I think it was actually my wife's car. And so I kind of knew what happened because Dick and I talked a lot about, you know, the people parked in the spots all the time. We actually debated one time whether we should, we should buy a tow truck and hire someone to tow cars out of there. So I called Dick and he was so, so sorry. And he actually went with me. I remember we went down to where they towed the car to, which was down by, over by DeSalvo's. He was just so apologetic and so, so sorry that he'd done it. But I think what makes my story unique is that about two months later, he towed the same car from the same spot. And I never let him forget it. So I guess I'll be short, but what I want to say is that there are so many people who will miss Dick. And I am definitely one of them. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Mr. Lavecchio?
Yes, Judge. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. May it please the court. That's a great story, Don. I, I spent a lot of time trying to stop Dick from towing people at the office at the Woodlands Bank Building. He actually towed one of my client's cars that had his dog still in it. And we had to go rescue, rescue the, the truck and the dog from the towing agency. So yeah, that's pretty funny. But yeah, I hadn't worked, I haven't worked with Dick that long. I was fortunate enough that he had asked me to come along and join he and Ryan at, at the firm. I have a good story about how that happened. At the time, I was of counsel with Campana Hoffa, Marone and Lavecchio. But then I was of counsel, so my name was off of that. Dick caught wind of that and had watched me in court a few times. But we had an arbitration where he was on the panel and I was representing my father-in-law, Ben Stopper. I'm sure a lot of you know who Ben Stopper is. Well, he, he was impressed with the fact that I was able to handle my father-in-law at that arbitration. And then he asked that I interview with him and then he ended up hiring me. hiring me to work with the firm and and and, you know, it's history from there. But uh, I just, I feel very fortunate that I was able to meet Dick, to work with Dick, even though it was only about a year and a half, like I said. Um, and uh, once COVID hit, we really didn't see him at all. Um, getting back to Don's during the towing, we worked really hard of finding a place with good parking and we finally found it and he didn't get to use it, unfortunately. He would have had, he would have had backdoor parking, it would have been right there, no one would have been towed. But unfortunately, he really didn't get to enjoy that because he was struggling with uh COVID and I believe uh the diabetes in his leg, he had the cast on for a while. But um, yes, I just feel so grateful, so lucky to have his last name on my sign. Uh, very grateful to have gotten to meet Janet, RJ, Chase, Connor Cooper, Matt, everyone. Um, and uh, just, just very grateful to have him as a part of my life. And I don't think I would be where I am now without him hiring me, introducing me to Ryan. I've gained two great friendships out of that, out of that meeting. And uh, just, just so grateful and fortunate to have him as a part of my life. And I'll sincerely, I sincerely miss him. Uh, Matt and I talk often about how fun it would have, it would be to have Dick around and just share some of our war stories because he loved it. He loved it and he was, he was a great listener. And he, and like everyone else said, very clever, very smart, very funny, and I'm really gonna miss him. And I'm uh, very, very sorry for your loss, Janet and everyone. And uh, I express my sincere condolences and sympathies. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the court approves the report and resolution of the committee and enters the following order. And now this fourth day of May, twenty twenty-one, in consideration of the resolutions presented by the committee appointed to draft resolutions in the death of Richard J. Callahan Esquire. The said resolutions are adopted and it's ordered and directed that the resolutions herewith submitted and it be adopted as an official expression of the Likehoming County Law Association and its court. And that the same be spread upon the records of the court and the copies of this resolution be delivered to the family of Richard J. Callahan. And it is further ordered and directed that said resolution be entered at large upon the record of the court and that it be printed in a Likehoming reporter. I'd like to ask my colleagues now to say a few words. Um, Judge Tira texted me that he had a prior commitment, so he was unable but I would then call upon Judge Lindhart.
Thank you, Judge Buss. But, you know, it it's been such a pleasure to to just sit and listen to these stories about Dick from those who knew him so well. And so I, I just want to start by thanking those who've taken the time to participate uh and share their memories um of him. I hope that um these stories have brought some comfort to Janet and their family to know um how much Dick was loved and respected by those who worked with him and uh and how much he'll be missed. I had the pleasure of knowing Dick and professionally in my private practice. A well district attorney and um as a judge. And the thing that struck me about Dick is he had the ability to be such an effective advocate for his clients without ever being unreasonable or difficult. Ever. Um, and that is rare to find that. Um, he was a good man and he will be missed.
Thank you. Judge McCoy.
No, it seems like we're getting together way too often lately to be doing these memorial services. Um, but each time it seems like the committee does a better and better job. And so I echo um Judge Lindhart and congratulate District Attorney Gardner and the committee on um a great job with the resolution that was offered today. Um, I had the pleasure of having many family law cases with um Dick during my career. And I agree with what District Attorney Gardner said, which that he was definitely a feisty fighting Irishman in the courtroom. But what was, what was most impressive about him was that before a hearing or after a hearing or any time that you weren't actually in the courtroom, he was a friend, a colleague, someone you could learn from, someone who would help you out. Um, and again, what Judge Lindhart said is he could do things so effectively. Um, that it was just a pleasure to work with him. Um, once I became a judge, Dick appeared in front of me countless times um with the amount of family law work that he did. Um, in fact, he was scheduled in front of me the day that he passed away. Um, I had the opportunity to see that that feisty fighting Irish side from the bench, um which is definitely a different perspective. And though he always was still professional and maintained um his professional decorum. There were definitely some attorneys who brought out more of that feisty fighting Irishman than others. Um, and at times it was kind of fun to watch um and hard to not giggle or smile from the bench when he was doing it. I had the chance to have many, many conversations with him over the years. Um, but I think probably the best conversations that I had with him were those about Chase, Connor and Cooper. Um, it was great to hear about his grandchildren and learn about them. Um, I didn't know a lot of the things about Dick that people said today. Um, and it's, I'm surprised because I've had so many conversations with them. But I think that just kind of goes to his character. Um, he really wanted to talk more about me and my family or to tell me about his grandkids. So my deepest sympathy to the family and he will be missed.
Thank you. Joe Slevickia.
Hey. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, well, I'm gonna, I I guess, take it on a different spin. Uh, Dick and I met in nineteen eighty-one when I was first dating my wife and I think Janet and Dick had a little get-together over at their house. Uh, I think it was in Lowell Sock, Janet, if I remember correctly. And um, I got there and I was twenty-two or twenty-three. And um, at that time, uh, I I learned rather quickly that his generation and his friends were professionals at enjoying life and I was just an amateur at it. Uh, uh, we, I sat down to play cards with them. Uh, and I had no money, so I asked Angela if I can have some money. She gave me ten dollars. And I realized that ten dollars wasn't even enough to get me through the firsthand. Uh, because I said they were professionals, so I ended up uh leaving and uh actually at night finding my way back to where my in-laws lived, not having any idea. Uh, but then Dick and I would over the, over the years would would joke about that because I'd say that um, the people who were, who grew up in the seventies like myself were amateurs, but the people who grew up in the sixties, they were pure professionals at uh enjoying life. Uh, and let's be honest, you know, Dick was a son of a bitch to try a case against. Uh, I I'm sorry that that's on the record, but it's true. He was tough and he and I had cases against each other. We, we went at it. Uh, he really was, and I admired that about him. Because as everyone said, he he was just smart. He knew what angles uh to use. Uh, he knew people and uh he was just tremendous advocate. Uh, and those who he served uh were were well-served. Uh, Dick and I would have a lot of conversations outside of the courtroom, outside of uh law. We loved to talk about uh basketball. We loved to co- talk about coaching since he and I both coached high school sports at the time. And uh, as people said, he was a man of of many talents. Uh, we talked all the time about uh how he would impact Lowell Sock basketball and the players he had. And he gave me a lot of advice on how to deal with uh high school athletes. Um, I think what he did for those in need, we talked about that a lot and how he helped kids. You know, he had a genuine interest and a genuine sincerity when it came to helping those in 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 need. Uh, you know, I didn't know his grandchildren, but I knew RJ and Shannon uh very well since they grew up. Uh, and Janet and my ex uh brother-in-law uh were a brother and sister. And uh, so I got to know them even when they were young and, you know. He always talked about them. I always asked them about them, how they were doing and stuff. And, you know, it was echoed. Uh, and and many said it, you know, when you lose a child, it it changed them, you know, there's a part of you that changes forever. Um, and, you know, I I couldn't help but to notice, uh, you know, how how he struggled to still go on, but how there was a certain sadness uh about it. Uh, it was, it was funny and and I'll leave you with this. Um, true story. Yesterday, I'm driving to work. I'm at the corner of Rural and Market, the confusion corner. And uh, this beautiful forest green Jaguar pulls to the left of me. And it was a metallic type color and it was in perfect condition. And I'm looking at it and this guy drives by and he's got the gray hair, he's got a gray beard. And I said, oh, that's Dick. Uh, and I realized almost immediately that he had passed and a a certain sadness came upon me. Uh, and I think it was Judge McCoy said, or someone else said, we've done a lot of these, too many of them. Uh, I will miss him and my condolences to everybody. Uh, Janet, I I know how hard this is for you, RJ and everyone else. I know how hard this is for you. But know that he was loved and respected uh in many ways. And uh, he left this world a better place than when he came in. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to the family, I had my, my most memorable times that I had with um Dick were when I was in the district attorney's office and as as an assistant district attorney. He knew that I was born in Philadelphia and raised um in the suburbs, that I had season tickets to the Philadelphia Flyers. So we talked hockey, we talked Eagles football. Um, I just admired him because he had this separate life that he wasn't defined as a lawyer. He just had his fingers in a lot of different things in a good way. And um, I thought that that was what really made him so effective as an attorney is because he had all these interests and all this skill in communicating with people in a lot of different ways. And we could go from talking out in the outer office at John McDermott's office to then coming into the courtroom and having a knock-down, drag-out preliminary hearing. But totally respected, you know, coming out afterwards saying, hmm, yeah, you got this one now, but I'm gonna get you later. And just kind of chuckling to think how how fun that is, how professional that is. You can be serious in the courtroom, but you could still engage with people one-on-one even if you're on the opposite side. And that's one thing. Um, even his partner, Tony Neely, was kind of the same way that I just saw the two of them when they were in practice together and when Tony was still alive that they just had sense about them, that they could be really serious, yet they didn't take themselves too seriously. Um, they knew they had a job to do and they did it well. But they enjoyed themselves and they enjoyed their family and the time with their loved ones. So just as others before me have said, I can't imagine the depth of your loss. I'm so sorry. Um, he's affected so many people in the community. And I hope you will know that how much we um respected him and admired him and will miss him as well in the courts. So um, I'd be now happy to open it up to any members that uh of the bar who are here that would like to say anything on behalf of Dick. Um, just unmute and give me a chance to recognize you so I can make sure.
Mike Collins.
I got you, Mike. So that um, I've got um, so that the Erica, the court reporter here can get your name. So, Mike.
Okay.
Collins.
I lost the internet. I lost the internet there for a while and I thought I, I missed out on this, but
Nope, you're good.
Janet, RJ, Matt, grandchildren, and Joe Barrigan. Um. It's funny, Ed was talking and I probably knew Dick as long as Ed and Skip Gravy because we came in together in seventy-four, us and five other attorneys. And uh, that was really interesting because we got to be friends and I got to meet the Callahan, his parents. I got to meet the Barrigan family. Um, Joey Barrigan, we tried to teach him how to play basketball, Dick and I over at Sebonifis, but it didn't work out too well for Joe. And I tell you, um, one of the funny things too, I remember Janet, is about meeting your dad with Dick. We're out for he also introduced me to a couple watering holes, which was difficult to get me to do that, but I did do it with Dick. And his, your father was the president of both Republican Club and the Democratic Club at that time, which I just scratched my head about, but that was the kind of guy he was. And that was the kind of people I was meeting with Dick, with his relatives. And then he was fortunate enough to go into that firm where he ended up getting one heck of a good foundation legally. Uh, working with some really fine attorneys until he went out on his own. And it showed with Dick. There was no question, as Ed talked about, he was a bright son of a gun. He was quick on his feet. He had that uh, he had that quick wit too. And I I did jot something down when Don Martino mentioned the towing and what Dick used to do. And then it hit me, what the hell am I thinking of? About ten or twelve years ago, Dana's cousins from Ireland are visiting and we're, they're in the front table of the Bullfrog Brewery and I'm late. And I come screeching into that parking lot and I go, oh, there's Dick's parking spot. What I didn't do, I admit, is I didn't go into his office. I just parked there. Went in for lunch, look out a couple of minutes later, there goes my car up the street on Action Towing. So we had quite a laugh about that later with Dick. He said, all I had to do was come in. So he was known for doing that towing. And Ed mentioned his, his, how good he was as an athlete, but especially at basketball. And he showed that down the road as he ended up coaching at Lowell Sock. But when we were younger attorneys back then, we played together and we played on something called the courthouse team. A bunch of attorneys and the, one of the senior judges, a big tall guy you might know, also played on the team. And Dick was so good. But one game, and it was a great league, the industrial league, and Dick is our coach and our player. And at the end of the game with ten seconds to go, Williamsport Hospital, we're down by one. And we, ten seconds, we're running around trying to, what do we do now? It's our ball out of bounds. Well, good old Dick, calm and collected, draws up a play and uses that senior judge that you know as the linchpin where he catches the pass at the top of the circle, throws it into the corner and the guy hits a jumper, we win the game. But everybody else couldn't figure out what to do. Dick knew that much about basketball, not only as a good player, but just as a coach and in the clutch. And he did the same thing, I believe, as an attorney too, never got rattled, okay? Um, in fact, in that same industrial league brings back a sour memory of dislocating my right ankle and having to be taken by ambulance to the hospital. And Janet, you may remember, we sat and waited for that orthopedic surgeon for three or four hours with Dick and Shannon uh sitting there with me, sort of keeping me calm. I'll never forget that. And that's another example of the way Dick was. Uh, if you needed some help, you needed him to be there, he was there. He was a heck of a husband and dad and especially enjoyed the role of a grandfather. Uh, it was pretty impressive, the way he used to talk about them. So overall, I just want to say, he showed a hell of a lot of courage when he went through all this, these health concerns. I mean, that diabetes and everything, it just, and here's a guy who was active most of his adult life in sports and all kinds of things, golf. But he, he really handled it well. When we'd run into each other, which wasn't as much, but at Wegmans, we'd talk about it. He was very impressive and uh, I'm just glad I got to say something about him. We're gonna miss him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members of the family that are here that wanted to say a few words? Mr. Barrigan?
I'm hoping my connection's okay.
I can hear you.
I just wanted to thank you all. Thank you. And I wanted to thank you all for for sharing those memories and the thoughts of Dick. Um, and you're all spot on. He was, he was quite an individual and we we miss him dearly. And he was uh very quick on his feet, as you all mentioned, and funny. He was very funny. And uh, I was uh probably about four years old when he came into our family. So he was like a brother to me a lot. And Mike, I think you challenged me to a So he was like a brother to me a lot. And Mike, I think you challenged me to a basketball game there. I might take you up on that. But I just wanted to thank you very much for for doing this and recognizing Dick and honoring him in this way. It's it's very special and it was wonderful to hear all of your, you talk about him today. So thank you very much. I appreciate the time, Judge.
You're welcome. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? And seeing no one else, ladies and gentlemen and members of the bar and bench, I believe this would conclude our memorial service for Richard. I'd like to thank again the members of the family, members of the Law Association and the bench for attending today's service. And this special session of court is now adjourned.